I'm thinking about the chairman starting the meeting, it does, doesn't it? I call to order the budget meeting of Langston County Board of Supervisors. And do we normally say the allegiance, pledge allegiance that this be leaders?
We haven't been, but it's up to you.
All right. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. May be seated. Okay, we're gathered here today to have the presentation of the budget for the 2022.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, fiscal year. All right, so at this time, Mr. County Administrator?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I've got on the screen the synopsis page from the budget. Glenn, do I need to? Am I coming through okay on that? Okay. We start out with the fund balance in the top left corner. You'll remember when Paul Lee was here in December that he recognized for you all that our fund balance had increased at the end of FY20, going from 1.9 million to 4.834 million. So we're starting out better than we did last year at this time. This budget is built using existing tax rates, the 63 cents real estate tax rate, and all the personal property tax rates as they were last year. One cent on the tax rate this year will generate $267,937, should you all wish to make any adjustments to the real estate tax rate going forward.
That number again, please.
Two sixty-seven, nine thirty-seven. On March 1st, I received information from the state that the General Assembly had approved a revised budget, which will give all compensation board employees, all constitutional officers and their staffs, a 5% raise effective July 1, '21. So this budget is built assuming that 5% raise across the board for not only the comp board funded employees, but our other employees as well. As I've told you in the past, 44% of our full-time employees are comp board funded, 56% are not. Last year, there was no raise given to county employees. You did do a small raise for the sheriff's office in September, I believe, and then in December, you did give a $500 bonus to match what the state did at that time. So, other than that, there were no raises last year. Health insurance this year is down 1%. Last year, there was a 4.96% increase, which our employees had to eat because there was no raise last year. This year, there's a 1% decrease. This budget is built using all existing folks who are participating in our health insurance plan, using their current selection, whether it's single, family, or dual. So, with that preface, I'll jump right in. Let me state that on your laptops, if you have pulled up the iCompass portal and you click on today's meeting, you'll see a bunch of attachments that are hyperlink. You can click on, what I've done is I've attached the budget worksheet page at the beginning of each section. So, the Excel spreadsheet for revenues will be the first, like 14 pages there. Under general government, it's like six pages. And then after that is all of the supporting documentation that I have gotten from the various departments. I've got one thing to tell you, for some reason, when I was attaching this late this afternoon, for some reason, when I attached the synopsis, it downloaded recreation and culture where the synopsis is. So I got to go in and unpublish, delete that, and republish the synopsis. So, but that's gonna take a little bit of time, so I'll do that either after this meeting is over or tomorrow morning. So, the rest of them should be correct. So, any questions on that? All right. All right, I said we're starting out with the fund balance of 4.834 million in FY21. You'll see this first column is the approved values from FY21. And down at the bottom, you'll see that our projected fund balance at the end of FY21 is 5.628 million, or 17.66% of your total expenditures. Moving over to FY22, the fund balance gets carried forward here. As I said, this budget is built with assuming existing tax rates, so that's why this number is the same as FY21. Other local funds, as we'll get into in a little while, have increased, as well as funds from the Commonwealth and federal government. School operating revenues are up as well, slight decrease in school cafeteria, and the same for school textbooks. So you'll see that there is a 974,000 projected estimated increase in revenues for FY22. Expenditures. General government. Most of these increases are the 5% raise. However, there are three new positions which have been requested for this budget cycle. And one of those is in general government, one is in courts, and the other is in community development. I will tell you that last, no, Tuesday night, when the school board held their public hearing on their budget, you'll remember that the local contribution was up $36,047. Tuesday night, based on information, new information from the state, the school board passed a level, local-funded budget. So that $36,047 has gone away. So they are requesting the exact same local contribution that they got last year.
Their raise is 3%, is that right?
Their raise is 3%, but they also gave a 3% last year. So, the biennial budget requires a 5% for teachers, so they will exceed that over the two years by 1%. If you all choose to fund everything in this budget, which I doubt you will... The, you're gonna eat up about $129,000 of your fund balance. So it would drop from 5.6 to 5 point, just under 5.5. Still at 16.29% of total expenditures, which is well above what you all adopted several years ago at 7%. Just for information purposes, down here at the bottom, there's a very small amount of capital project fund revenues, basically interest. The proposed capital improvement budget right now for FY22 is at $1,643,995. The planning commission is holding their public hearing on that next Thursday night, and then they will forward their recommendations to you. So I can tell you that all of the prior borrowings that you have done, which provided money for capital improvement items, have been expended. So your capital improvement expenditures will have to be funded out of the general fund or seek additional financing. This may be a use for siting agreements for solar facilities. With the ordinance that you passed last month, we still have several things to do to make this functional and active by July 1. But those siting agreements are for capital improvement items. So that may be a way to fund some of those capital improvement items. All right, as I said, when I went through here, I wanted the total number under general property taxes to stay the same. Because when somebody looks at that synopsis page, I wanted them to know that, you know, this does not propose a tax increase, this does not propose a tax decrease, it's the same. So, if you look at the current property taxes in the estimated column, I dropped that down a little bit because last year, we had this figure, and in FY20, we had this figure. This figure did not account for land use taxation. It did not account for the elderly tax exemptions. So I had to back out some for those reasons. So it brings it more in line with the actual FY20. And I tried to use FY20 actuals to predict estimates for FY22. Yes?
Penalties and interest. There's a reduction of penalties and an increase in interest.
Yeah, I'm going off of the actuals right here on FY20. That's where I base my estimates from.
I guess I don't understand where the penalties come from.
That is penalties on taxes.
If you're late paying.
You're late paying, is the penalty on that?
And interest.
If you missed the December 5th deadline, it's a 10% penalty.
But there's less penalties and there's more interest. Unless I'm not reading this correctly.
No, no, there's less interest than there are penalties. It's 150, actual, it's 153 from FY20 in penalties and 139 in interest.
I'm just looking at the far right, so I guess I'm not doing it right. Because now the next column over to you, right?
That's the change, that's the change. And see, we had estimated 190,000 for penalties in the prior two fiscal years. But based on the actual, the actual is 153, so I reduced FY22 estimate to 150.
Okay, okay. It's a observer error.
You got your mic on?
No.
Okay, that's why.
All I gotta do is mention it though, Glenn. I could get to it.
So that's what I've done throughout this whole budget. I tried to use the FY20 estimates to go by for FY22. FY21's consumed with the COVID issue, and we haven't completed FY21. I did look at where we are currently in FY21 to see if my estimates were off track. But I, you know, I feel good with what I've put up there. I will tell you that the state puts out an estimate of local sales and use taxes for every county, every jurisdiction in the state. And what they tell us to use is over $2 million. But our actuals never reach what the state estimates. So I try to be conservative and...
That's because some of it sticks to their pockets before it gets passed.
Well, that's true, because part of it, part of it is earmarked for transportation issues in the Hampton Roads area in northern Virginia. So that's why...
Here. No, here.
So, so that's, you know, I want to point out also, the transient occupancy tax where that we, you all, adopted a couple of years ago, and Dr. Westbrook was very helpful in getting the word out. In FY21 right now, we are almost at $11,000 collected in FY21 through February. So that's why I've estimated $15,000 for FY22. So it's more money than what I thought. And so that's, you know, it's a nice, nice little added chunk of change right there. Coming on down, the big item, you know, everything is pretty similar to last year. And if it's different, it's based on the FY20 actuals. And our building and land use permits continue to go up. And so that's why I have estimated 130,000 there. Fines and forfeitures, not a whole lot of difference there. Use of money, this is from interest earned, and the treasurer does a real good job of keeping our money in the highest interest-earning accounts. And this, you can see what we budgeted in the past, and you can see what our actuals are. So we've done a pretty good job there. Charges for services, you'll see right here, courthouse security fee last month. You adopted an ordinance which increased the security fee from $10 to $20 for each conviction. So I've basically doubled what we received in FY20 right here. Our ambulance and rescue fees, FY20 was up over our estimate, so I bumped that up a little as well. Refunds and donations and insurance recoveries, I really have no way of estimating that because I don't know if we're gonna have any of those things. So I basically, you can see what we did actual, but I don't want to put a number on that because I don't know if we're gonna have those. So what I've done is just stick with what we've done in the past and use $40,000. This VRA 2010C interest rebate, this is the school energy performance contract. And when we were refunding the prior bonds last fall, I really dove into this 2010C, the school energy performance bond. And actually, there's a potential refunding on that bond right now. The VRA notified me, and Davenport gave me a summary estimate of what we could save, and it's very little. It's about $40,000 that we could save. And I think our costs of issuance between Davenport and Sands Anderson would eat all of that up. So I don't, I don't think that it's a useful, a useful thing to pursue at this time. Now, what this interest rebate is, that particular bond in 2010 had some type of subsidy attached to it. So we get a certain amount of that interest back each year. And in the documents that Davenport has provided me, you'll see that we're projected to get $14,600 back from that interest paid on this, in the school energy performance contract. Recovered costs, the health department usually, for whatever reason, maybe they are short-staffed at certain times of the year. They usually refund a little bit of that $215,000 that we pay them each year. You see that in FY21, we're estimated at $8,000 coming back. I don't think that's gonna happen because if there was any, if there was ever a year where the health department has earned their money, this year has been it. And so I don't expect this $8,000 to occur, but that's in FY21. And so what I did, well, I just put $5,000 here because typically, we get some back in a normal year. So if FY22 is more of a normal year, we may end up getting some back. This $50,000 right here is really the same as this 52 right here, it just shows up in a different line. If you'll remember, the first year the broadband authority had a budget, the first year you all gave them a budget. You wanted to transfer money from the Poorhouse Track Fund because that was earmarked for economic development to cover the budget for the broadband authority. The budget that year was 52.5, they ended up using 50,000 of that. That was for the consultant who prepared the USDA Russ grant. So that's an option too, moving forward. If you all want to fund any economic development-related items with the Poorhouse Track Fund, the current balance in the Poorhouse Track Fund is $330,264.
But I might just say, when we get to that, that their budget request of the broadband authority is substantially more because of their plans going forward. So this economic development would still apply for what they're trying to do.
Yes, yes. So I mean, that's just food for thought to keep in the back of your mind.
Mr. Gill, in the records, you didn't see any, anything else other than economic development?
What's that?
For these, for the Poorhouse Track. You didn't see anything else other than economic development in the records?
No, that money was set aside when the piece of property was sold to the Audubon Society.
Yep.
And it was...
I'm aware.
Yeah, and it was...
I'm aware for discussion too.
Yeah, and it was set aside, I think it was just under $400,000 or something. And it's just been sitting there and hasn't been touched. To my knowledge, this withdrawal was the first withdrawal that has come from that account. Do you remember any?
George is... There was one other, but I can't recall what it was, but there was one other.
Okay.
George seems to know what it is.
It was about $470,000 was the amount initially. And $100,000 or so was spent for some other capital item along the way. Brought that balance down to 370, and that's when I missed the call.
But I guess the question that I understand is, can it be used for anything else other than economic development?
Well, it was earmarked for economic development when the board sold that piece of land. So, I mean, future boards can change things, so...
Well, yeah, the original board, when we first discussed this thing, those funds were supposed to have been going toward, like, water access. That's what it was supposed to have been going for. I didn't realize they had recorded it as economic development. So sometimes things were done, well, I won't say no more. It's economic development.
But you all can change that because you're the board of supervisors, so that's, that's your choice.
Yes, sir.
Real issue is that money's off-budget, you never see it, that's why it was hidden for about a decade.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, because this is just the general fund. This is what this is. All the CARES money is not reflected in this because that's in a separate account.
And that was a pass-through anyhow.
Yeah, so this, this is just your general fund.
I'm just a little boiling, a little bit with the sleight-of-hand stuff. Hopefully, this board would not do that.
I think you're the chairman, you can direct when we're gonna have a discussion.
VPA, Virginia Public Assistance, they had a pretty substantial increase overall, but it's only, it's like a $9,800 increase in the local contribution. So the local contribution is $439,000. Non-categorical aid, again, this is pretty, pretty close to actual values from FY20. Your categorical aid, Dr. Westbrook was asking me, why do we have the word expenses on the revenue side? It is a little bit confusing, so maybe we can change that wording a little bit. But what I've done here is I've gone in and taken the values from FY21 and added that 5% that the state is going to give to all comp board funded employees and their staffs effective July 1, '21. Other categorical aid, victim witness grant, the local jails per diem, this number may actually go up because the vacancy, I think that Patrick could probably hang a no vacancy sign down there now because the population in the jail is up.
If you looked at what we've collected so far for this fiscal year for that category, it's almost zilch, as I recall.
Is it, okay.
Certainly isn't up in the neighborhood of $45,000 or close to it.
All right.
You say the jail is full right now?
It's, it's, it's more people down there than it has been in a while.
But the capacity's 50, if I'm wrong.
Yeah, and the last time I checked, it was, it was over 40 down there.
Well, that is significant because they've been averaging about 18.
Yeah, yeah.
So the per diem that we get for jails, has that had anything to do with the expenses of the jails? Or just what the state government wants to hand out?
It's a, it's a set amount per prisoner.
Yeah, it's a per diem amount, and as far as the expenses are concerned, yes, expenses are gonna go up with no other reason for food and medical and that sort of thing.
And their outfits, their jumpsuits.
Yes, prison guard.
Right.
So yes, it is a variable there, but...
But it's always a year behind then? I mean, the state looks at what happened last year and gives money based on that?
No, it's only on the basis of actual, a person's occupying that space. In other words, if you don't have somebody go in there, no per diem's paid.
Yeah, the amount through February in FY21 for that is $20,892.
Well, I'm just wondering about the time lag between having 18 people there and having 40 people there.
This is a big surprise to me too.
No, I just wonder how the state, what's the time lag for the state to give money? Because this is an annual budget that we're estimating, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure how often this money comes in, I'll have to check.
I'm just curious.
It should come in fairly quickly. It should come in as they incur the...
Well, yeah, but there's what it should, it could, it's the state.
You're right, you're absolutely right. It's worth looking into because like I say, as of December, it wasn't near that amount.
Yeah.
That's the last time I looked at it, the mid-year.
You'll see I have increased the revenue side from the Comprehensive Services Act. I've also increased the expense side by $200,000 because our CSA budget is increasing. And every jurisdiction in the state has this same issue. Just for comparison purposes, Westmoreland's CSA budget is like 1.4 million. And let's see, North Alblin, Richmond, and Middlesex, and Matthews are less than Lancaster. Essex, Essex is over a million dollars as well. So, and we really have no control over this. This is for the children who cannot be educated in public schools, and they have to either have private day placement or day school somewhere else, outside of the public school, so...
And sometimes one child can increase the budget by $100,000.
It's amazing. I attend a monthly meeting, it's called CPMT, Community Policy Management Team, where these issues are discussed. And it's amazing to me, the amount of money that this costs, so... You know, our, our local share of this is at 44%. And the state reimburses us for 56%. The Middle Peninsula Northern Act Community Services Board can provide some of the services for these children, and they do. And it's much cheaper for the county if the CSB can do it. Now, not, not every instance can the CSB handle. But, and that's one thing that I do on that CPMT, is I try to make sure that if there are... But uh, and that's one thing that I do on that CPMT, is I try to make sure that if there are uh, items that the CSB can handle, I would rather see them do it than go through the CSA. So. Everything else there is.
I'm glad to see that you sat on that board, it makes a difference.
Yeah. This is the, let's see, this is the state share for uh, Virginia Public Assistance, uh, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. And revenue from the federal government for public assistance is over a million. This is when I talked earlier about the sixteen thousand dollars uh, of revenue from the Capital Projects Fund, this is where this is. Your school operating fund, here's where I, I was telling you, the local contribution is now requested to be equal from what uh, last year was. Eleven million, six hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is the breakdown of uh, the school's detailed spreadsheets.
Page nine.
This comes from.
Page nine.
Yeah.
No, I know where I look.
This comes from uh, Whitney Barrick's detailed spreadsheets that she's provided to me. Uh, so air budget is up to date with the school budget included.
May I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
When the school doesn't use all the funds that we allow, uh, give to them. Uh, it, it actually never leaves the general fund.
That's right.
When do we know that amount? Because I think that's money that Bonnie puts in that interest-bearing account that's, that helps us.
Well, I mean, uh, they know after the fiscal year ends.
Well, I know, so that's what I'm asking, like, July.
If you look at the last reports of, yes, as you get to the end of the year, you can come up pretty daggone close to what it will be. Uh, because, you know, their expenditure rates, their, their, their spending is pretty much uniform from one month to the next. And so you can project, so let's say, and probably at the end of this month, you could probably make a projection as to how much they will return uh, at the end of the year, if any, based on what their expenditures are as of now. Now, the only thing that troubles me this year is, is that when they, when I looked at, at their actuals, for two departments, they have not only spent their whole year's monies, but considerably in excess, excess of that. Overall, they're within the monies that were given to them or appropriated to them. And I asked them about it because it looked to me like those could have been CARES monies where the, where the, the general fund hadn't been reimbursed yet. And they were supposed to, remember, Mr. Russell was supposed to look into that. They said, have you seen that square itself away? Because that makes no sense to me that they would have spent their whole amount in general maintenance and IT for the year and then some as of the end of December.
I can understand the IT part because of the COVID.
I agree, but, but a lot of that should have been funded with CARES money.
Well, but they also have the ability to shift things around. I, I, I guess my, the reason I started the question was, um, we expect that they've had less activity in many areas. We expect that they're gonna have a significant, maybe significance is not the right word, but have money that they're not using that stays in the general fund, which will affect our bottom line. Where you're showing on the front page, the synopsis page, uh, hopefully that would actually go up.
Yeah, yeah. It's not that much though, as of the middle of the year, because of this wide disparity in those two departments. You all probably got the same phone call I did about lights down at the, at, at drain fields and how the statement was made to me that the schools got oodles of money running, running, you know. Everybody's assuming that, but I don't know that it's the case, the, the, the documents don't show it.
I, I have not gotten uh, a good answer on that, but I'll, I'll try to get a better answer for you.
I'm assuming they'll have an answer for us.
Before we have our next work session.
They'll have an answer for us.
I mean, you all are scheduled to hold your school budget public hearing on April first, uh, so.
And, and I just assumed talk about the upcoming budget as opposed to talking about current year's execution. I would like to get that question answered before or separate and apart from.
Gotcha.
And when, when they came in to us, you know, when was it? Uh, when we first met.
Yeah.
The, the finance committee met with them, they've had more than enough time to go back and look at it and balance things out.
I think maybe April first is an unfortunate choice of dates.
And that was maintenance and IT, correct?
Pardon?
Maintenance and IT?
Those were the two that, like I say, I, you know, no way in, no way in my mind should they have expended their full year's appropriation and, and much more at the halfway point. Except, like you say, for the IT, and they just add the transfer. But the same could be true for the maintenance thing.
Well, I would assume there's, there's, I don't know what the maintenance uh, involves, but there had to be fewer bus rides this year.
But you know, interestingly enough, that doesn't seem to make any difference because they took the bus drivers and they put them to work doing little dinky jobs around the school. And they're still paying them.
But that's a salary thing, it's not a maintenance on the bus thing. I mean, I don't know, I guess, I don't know enough about it to ask an intelligent question, but I'll find out.
We can get an answer for you on how, roughly how much they'll have left. And we, we can and should be able to get that by the time we meet again.
So that, that, that really takes us to the end of the revenue section, uh.
Mr. Gill, did they explain to you what the, uh, uh, community provider add-on mixed delivery is? Bonus payment and infrastructure and operation?
What's that, say that?
Um, I'm looking at two forty, zero, two, zero, dash, zero, one, zero, five.
What page are you on?
Uh, page ten, page ten.
Oh, we're back, we're back away.
All right, which, which uh, which one, what, which one was?
Right at the bottom, community provider add-on mixed delivery.
Uh. No, sir. That's a question for them, I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Hmm. Yeah, that's the first time it's appeared then.
Yeah.
I got you.
Any other questions on the revenue section? All right, we'll jump over to expenditures, start out with general government. This may be the easiest one to do. The board of supervisors, uh. Because you can see what you did in FY twenty, uh, this is FY twenty-one. I just kept the numbers close, uh, actually the same. The only difference is this one percent decrease in the health insurance, uh, which is reflected there. We have one member of the board who participates in our health plan. Go to county administration. You'll see, uh, right here, I bolded salaries. Now, that's not an increase for me because I'm not listed for the five percent uh, per my contract. But if you all will remember, in uh, closed meeting discussions, personnel, you directed me to uh, look at hiring an assistant county administrator. Uh, that person, I would also uh, want to be heavily engaged with economic development. You know, maybe it's an assistant county administrator slash economic development director. Uh, so seventy-five thousand in salary plus benefits is reflected in that. And that will carry over to the personnel section, uh, which you have in the printed version that I gave you tonight. I did not put that personnel section on the iCompass portal, uh, because it's personnel related.
Also, um, we never, we haven't finished our conversation about insurance for all employees.
I, I got, I got that, I'm gonna hit on that.
Okay, I'm just saying that that will fit into.
Yeah.
Sorry, that will fit into this.
Yeah. But as I said, this is, this budget is built with the current plans, the current participants.
Right.
That we have current.
It's the right starting place.
So, uh, what I did, uh, under my budget, I just basically, this is the FY twenty-two column. And I just rearranged some of the values based on FY twenty actuals. Uh, but it, in the non-salary items, even though a lot of the figures are different, there's no increase or decrease. It's a wash with what I did. Any questions on that one? County attorney, Jim says we don't pay him enough and uh. He would like to uh, ha- have more uh, work, but I'm still budgeting him at twenty-five thousand. So, and I'm just kidding about that.
Well, he's the guy who says he can argue either side of the question, so.
But I always wanna know which way he could argue the best.
That's right.
Uh, Robinson Farmer Cox, you remember the contract you signed a couple of years ago? It contained an eight hundred dollar increase each year. Uh, they, we've had them forever, I think, and they very seldom ever increase the price. And uh, this last contract that you all approved had a eight hundred dollar a year uh, increase. So that's, that's the reason for that.
Maybe it's a good time to talk about it, but the financial report that we got from. I, I, I'm a little troubled by it because, and I know that they had their statutory requirements we have to meet with respect to our funding, our pension plan, you know, that that's a big item. There's all this data that has to show, you know, whether or not. But it seems like the whole report has gradually become almost totally that. And some of the things you look for with respect to financial execution, some of those displays are not there anymore. At least that's was my impression. That disappoints me, I mean, I, you know, that's, that's, they're there for management, they're there for our purpose to look at. And all of a sudden they've gone away. I hope it's not because they, they're trying to keep it within this dollar amount that they don't go to the trouble to put in those, those displays. Did, did you get that impression in looking at it?
I, I, no, I've only been looking at those for three, you know, three or four years in depth. And so you've got much more experience than that. I do know that they have statutory requirements and that they, they, they meet that.
Well, we have the statutory requirements, they see to it, we meet them.
Yeah.
But has that, anybody else had the same impression that it's got slowly gotten into almost a total, uh, you know, effort at, at, with respect to the, the pension thing?
I didn't pay much attention to it this year.
Pardon?
I said I didn't pay much attention to it this year.
I wonder if it's worth the finance committee having an interview, discussion with them.
Oh, we could do that.
Have the cows eat the cabbage.
Yeah, we could do that.
But, but do you all have a problem with that, if I schedule something like that with him and just find out, you know, why some of these?
No.
That, that I've found to be useful through the years are gone now.
I think it would be good.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, shucks.
Uh, thankfully, we don't need to pay their, any reassessment, uh, in FY twenty-two. Commissioner revenue is uh, basically the same budget. The increases you see are all five percent raise related uh, there. Don't need the board of equalization in FY twenty-two either. Uh, treasurer, again, like the commissioner of revenue, the increases you see there are the five percent raise uh, related. She also did some juggling around with uh, some line items, but like me, the net result of the non-salary lines uh, is a wash. I will say that you'll see in the supporting documentation, uh, she has requested that the board consider uh, giving one of her employees who is not a compensation board employee, not funded by the state. This employee has achieved the master deputy treasurer certification. So if she were a comp board funded employee, she would be eligible for a nine point three percent raise. Uh, the treasurer has asked that the board consider uh, giving this uh, this employee that nine point three percent raise since she has achieved uh, that status and is not comp board funded. Now, what I have included in this salary estimate is just the five percent uh, raise for that individual. If you all would choose to match that nine point three percent, that the comp board would grant her, it would be an additional thirty-three hundred dollars.
Let me, let me ask you something, that's not nine percent in addition to the five percent?
That would be nine point three percent in addition to the five percent.
So we talk fourteen percent?
Fourteen point three percent for that one person. But like I said, if, if that person was a comp board funded employee, they would get that nine point three percent increase through the comp board.
Yeah.
But because she's not comp board funded, she's uh.
But she has all the credentials.
She has, she has achieved the master deputy treasurer certification.
And that's an additional nine hundred dollars.
It would be an additional thirty-three hundred dollars to that two hundred and ten thousand dollar figure right there.
Thirty-three hundred dollars. Could that be a step type thing this year and additional like next year?
I don't know, I mean, I don't know if there's any other certifications that uh, the subordinate employees in the treasurer's office can attain other than the master deputy treasurer.
What I was saying is, could we give her a part of that this year as an increase and another part next year?
You could, I don't see why you couldn't.
But what's the possibility that next year, the comp board, we're gonna have to match what the comp board does for that same position above what the comp board does for, unless I'm not understanding it correctly.
All she's asking for is the, the bump in salary that the comp board would fund.
Right, exactly.
For that certification.
And what I'm saying is, next year, if the comp board thinks that if she was a comp employee. That they would fund this, so are, are we gonna do this every year?
No, because I don't see that position becoming a comp board funded.
No, I'm not, it isn't now.
Yeah, right.
Oh, well, the title is, but not this person.
Yeah, right.
We basically talking about that because of certification.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I get it, and I, and I applaud this person for doing that. And I wonder whether it was out of her own pocket or her, his own pocket.
Uh, probably not, I mean, county probably paid for that, I'm sure. You know, just as an aside, in, in uh, in one of my hires, I, the, the money that I budgeted for salary, I started them out a little bit less and this person was to uh, get a thousand dollar bump for each certification that they achieved. Uh, you know, still within the budgeted amount, but uh, just, so you know, you know, the treasurer may could adjust her policies uh, like that, that's just, just a thought. But uh, regardless, if the board chose to, to grant that additional money for meeting that master deputy treasurer certification, it would be an additional thirty-three hundred dollars.
It was food for thought.
Thirty-three hundred. Thirty-three hundred.
I think it's food for thought.
It's food for thought, that's all.
It's good to know about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. IT, this is Mr. Rose specialty here, nothing uh. Nothing out of whack there, the, the increases are offset, that's for the five percent raise. Electoral board. Now, they are requesting additional money for compensation for election officials.
Why, why has that gone up some seventy percent?
You'll see in the supporting documentation that they estimate a certain amount of money per election for their election officials. And they've got it spelled out pretty well in the supporting documentation. So uh, I mean, I can flip to it and read it if you want.
No, but we can do that too.
Well, yeah, we can look at it too, but I, I'm not right now. But, but here's the thing, I, I took some, I, I went through and looked at the budgets for counties throughout the Commonwealth with a population between nine and eleven thousand dollars for the elective, combination electoral board and registrar. And ours was the second highest considerably of any of those in that category. And I picked nine to eleven thousand because un- under the, the idea that, that with that population, your expenses should be about the same with that, you know, as, as what ours would be. So, I think these folks need to answer why it costs us so much money to run our elections when these other counties can do it for considerably less.
I, I, I think that's a good question for uh, your.
Okay.
Your uh, uh, work sessions, when you have pre- when you have presentations from departments and NGOs.
But we definitely want to talk to them, the, the chairman of the Electoral Board and the registrar.
I've already told Susan that she and uh either the chairman or Lee should come.
Thank you.
Registrar. You'll see here that this figure is bolded as well. You know, last year uh the Electoral Board created the Assistant Registrar Position, or Deputy Registrar Position, and you all funded that. And uh, and that was at thirty-one and change. And so uh what they are requesting now is the same fifteen thousand dollar increase for the registrar that they have requested the past several years that you all have not granted. So uh within that hundred and eighteen thousand is uh a request for an additional fifteen thousand dollars for the registrar's salary. Now, we'll tell you that the General Assembly is very close to putting registrars at the same salary level with treasurers. So uh, you know, if you all, you know, that, that's probably gonna happen. And when it does, the, the comp board will fund the majority of her salary. So uh, again, it's the same fifteen thousand dollar request that's been before you for the last two years and you all.
But it's the same discussion about the General Assembly doing what they could do that we had last year also.
Yeah. And, you know, on the flip side of that, the registrar's salaries had not been adjusted since nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah.
So it's, it's past time to do it.
Didn't, didn't she get a bump last year though?
She got a bump last year. You, yeah, it's uh, but the, you know, that was reimbursed by the state. You know, we just added to her salary what the state bumped, so.
So in other words, we didn't, we didn't.
No, no, no additional local funds.
Yeah, no, nothing from local fund.
No. So.
More food for thought.
Food for thought there. It's extra fifteen thousand. And that brings the total to the uh general government at one million, six eighty-one, four ninety-one. And again, when you click on uh the iCupus site, when you click on the uh hyperlink attachments, the first few pages will be these spreadsheets. Then following these spreadsheets under general government will be all the supporting documentation for general government. You won't have to switch files. It'll be right there. You just scroll down through it to get it. And that's the way I've set it up for each of these tabs. You, you'll have a tab for courts, which we're getting ready to go into. The first few pages will be the uh, the budget spreadsheet, then all the supporting documentation, tech documentation following. Courts. We could probably title this a little bit better. This is what we have to provide for the Circuit Court Judges Offices, uh which is in Northumberland County. And the bill comes like the first of August and, and I, I have no way of knowing what that's gonna be at this point. So what I've done is I've just increased a little bit, uh kept it close to what the FY twenty was. In all reality, this, this may come in at close to thirty thousand. I just don't know.
Well, we got more prisoners in jail. They got there for a reason.
Yeah.
Maybe there were more court appearances if that's what some of this is based on.
Yeah. So that, that's what that line item is for. Uh, General District Court, not a whole lot, no, no change there. Adult Drug Court, you remember, I think it was two or three years ago, you all adopted a resolution to partner in this regional effort. And it was at a, a cost of six thousand dollars per year. And I, I gotta go back and look at the resolution, but after a certain number of years, it's supposed to be reevaluated to see if it is uh worthy of continuing, so.
And they have a documentation also, I would assume, that tells what they've done to earn the six thousand.
Yeah, yeah. So, but that is uh, you know, the board approved that several years ago, and this is one of the required years.
Yeah, it was.
There hasn't been anything spent since we, since we've budgeted for that, has there?
No, it, for the last two years, we've spent six thousand per year here. It's six thousand dollars per year. And I, for some reason, I'm thinking it was uh a five-year project, I believe. But after year three, I think they were supposed to go in and evaluate if, if it needed to be tweaked, uh continued or discontinued.
I, I believe we were sitting in the audience when this happened. It was before we were elected.
Yeah, I, I'll dig up, I'll dig up some more information on that. But that's, that's a, you know, a required expense uh by Board of Supervisors action. Clerk of the Circuit Court, uh increases here, all five percent salary related. Uh, she does, she did add uh two thousand under computer equipment. Library of Virginia Grant. I, I don't know if this is gonna come in. I mean, I, I don't know until, you know, somewhere along about this time each year whether this is coming in. I, I don't suspect it's gonna be thirteen thousand. It may be more like five grand. But uh the appropriations resolution that the board passes each year gives the county administrator authority to appropriate grants that don't require additional local funding uh into the budget. So uh that's how I have handled uh all the grants thus far. So that, to me, that's a better way of handling than trying to budget for something you don't know that you're gonna get. Uh, the CASA folks, five thousand is their normal contribution. Victim witness, the only change here is in the retirement. And I gotta get with Betty to see why that went up that much. I, I don't have a good answer for you on that. Commonwealth's Attorney. All right, here's another one where the salary figure is bolded. Right here. Mr. Spencer is requesting an additional Assistant Commonwealth's Attorney at about fifty-seven thousand per year. The reason is, the Code of Virginia states that if your law enforcement personnel use body cameras, that footage has to be reviewed, every bit of that footage, has to be reviewed by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. And that's what this additional Assistant Commonwealth's Attorney is for. And he's, you'll, again, you'll, you'll see it in the supporting documentation. You won't see a lot other than his handwritten statement at the bottom of his budget stating what I just said. I, I can pull the code sections and provide that in emails to you. And I'm also uh having Jim, I'm gonna ask Jim to, to look at this to make sure it is a, you know, a code requirement that the board has to fund.
Yeah, I, I would, I would appreciate you doing that, yeah.
Would it be a comp board employee?
Well, that's the other issue. I'm not positive of that either, so I need to check on that as well.
Good, because that makes a big difference.
It does. It makes a huge difference. You're right. But that's uh, that's an additional full-time employee. And you'll see that the total requested for FY twenty-two under courts is just under a million dollars. Any questions on the courts? Puppet Safety. Sheriff Law Enforcement. Believe it or not, a good, most of this, a hundred and forty-three thousand is the five percent uh salary increase. All of it is, right there. He is requesting additional twenty thousand in part-time salaries.
Excuse me, Don, before we go off with the salaries, you say a hundred and forty-three is, is five percent?
It's five, it, it, I believe it is, yes.
I think it's more than that.
Is it? All right, let me, let me see. There's no additional.
It's close to ten percent, isn't it?
Is it twelve percent?
What? Ten, twelve?
He said twelve.
Okay, I knew it wasn't five percent.
Yeah.
Well, but there are some.
Twelve point three.
Again, some of this is state comp.
That what you got, twelve point three?
And then we're matching the state comp for everybody that's not a comp employee, right?
Yeah, but it, if it's five percent across the board, if you look at what was adopted a year ago and what the increase is, a hundred and forty-three, two ninety-four divided by one million, one sixty-three is quote.
I got you. I, I understand how the percentage came about. I was just asking the question because some of their deputies are comp deputies, and we always have to make it up to those who are not.
Well, but my point is, is that it's five percent for everybody.
I know.
Not five percent plus, but the comp board, five point seven, no?
I, I know, I understand. But my expectation would be, if the comp employee's got five percent and we filled in five percent for everybody who's not a comp employee, that the total would be, from our standpoint, less than the five percent overall because part of it's paid by the state. I guess I'm not saying it well, but I don't understand.
You're talking two different things.
Probably so.
All I'm saying is, this number here doesn't look to be right.
Oh, I think you just proved it. You just proved it's not five percent.
It's the same number that carries over from the Personnel Section, so uh. I got, I, I, I need to look at that some later. Yeah, as I said, he's asking for twenty thousand in additional part-time uh money, the same in overtime. Additional money for maintenance service contracts.
Could it be that he's hired other people? Is that part of this? Because for like two years, he was behind the power curve on the number of people that he had.
Now, that, that salary get, is transferred from the Personnel tab, and uh it's the same number of employees. Two thousand dollars additional motor vehicles and ten grand extra in computer equipment.
What is happening there with other professional services under? My head was. I'm sorry, I'm ahead.
Where, are you under the uh law enforcement? Are you under jail?
No, I'm fine now.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so I'll, I'll delve into that salary issue a little bit more on that.
Don, the, the computer equipment, is that, is that totally different from what, you know, we hear when we go to the, the, the captain approval? I mean, because we doing stuff over there, then they got computer equipment over here. So I'm wondering, what's the difference? Why didn't uh he would present all of it under one thing, or is it?
This, this is, and maybe Glenn, could, could, could you help me on this? With what the sheriff's office, I mean, they, they have a contract uh computer assistance.
Yeah, they have some technical support.
Yeah.
Yeah, they pay for that, that's, that's.
Yeah, that, that's outside of what we provide in-house. Uh, they also have computers that are hooked to the Supreme Court that are uh in the Virginia Criminal Information Network, V-SIN. You know, to get more specific on that, you'd have to ask Patrick or Jeffrey.
So this, this, this computer equipment, fifty-five thousand beyond anything that, that I've seen already that, you know, been presented?
Yes, yes.
I wonder if it has anything to do with the body cameras? Because all of that gets stored in the cloud somehow.
That, that could be, because that, I, I do remember that uh the, the cost for the cloud storage, I believe, was like eight thousand.
Yeah, it's a chunk. And, you know, the computers in their cars tell everybody where they are. So I guess it's a GPS tracking or something, but uh.
Well, the sheriff will be here.
It's quite something.
The sheriff will be here at presentation time, so uh you could ask him then. This DCJS grant, we usually get this every year, but again, I don't know right now if we're gonna get it for FY twenty-two, so it's, it's uh just easier to leave it out. School Resource Officer, this uh increase is just a five percent. Volunteer Fire Department's uh same request. This year, we may be able to help them out additionally with CARES money. We were able to purchase some uh, some personal protective equipment uh for them with CARES money. And all three fire departments are very appreciative of that. I can tell you too that uh I got notification this week that out of the new stimulus package, the American Rescue Plan, Lancaster County is looking to receive two million, seventy-five thousand dollars out of this next uh stimulus deal. That's all I know at this point. I don't know if the rules will be the same, if they have, if it has to be spent by the end of the year. If all of the guidelines are still the same, I don't know that. But I do know the expected amount. Volunteer Rescue Services, uh not, not any change here. I, I will point out, this bolded two hundred dollars is the contribution to MedFlight, which is the Chesterfield uh organization. Again, I bolded this because you did not uh fund it in prior years. So I bolded that, so it would uh stick out.
Nor should we now.
Well, I don't know. We can talk about that. I'm on the other side of that. I've taken part in some medic, med uh back flights.
So what does two hundred dollars do for them? I mean, why?
Well, it's so many counties that they've received contributions from, and you'll see in the supporting.
I think it's a slap in the face if we don't do something to try to support it. It is only two hundred dollars. So I'm just telling you, I'm on the other side of that.
Well, again, the supporting documentation will explain uh additional information. Paid Rescue Services, this is uh Chief Smith's budget. Now, you remember a couple of years ago, he came up with a salary pay scale. So the salary here is not the straight five percent across the board. It is based on his salary pay scale that you all approved uh a couple of years ago. But if you do the math, it's pretty darn close to five percent. So uh he is asking for an increase of ten thousand in uh overtime and forty thousand in part-time. He's still down two full-time positions, and he makes up those shifts with part-time folks. And, and Matt covers quite a few shifts himself. I, I'll give him that. So uh this fifteen thousand extra here is for the Medical Director Position that uh you all approved several months ago as well. Again, in his supporting documentation, he goes through and explains the, each increase or decrease and uh, and spells it out for you pretty well. But about a hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase underpaid, and you can see what part of that is devoted to salaries. And about half of that is overtime and part-time. Another grant that I don't know, this is really the only grant that I, I, I'm comfortable with putting in the budget because we, we get it every year, and uh, and so that's why this one is included. And it's also included on the revenue side as well.
This is law enforcement?
No, that is a lo- a local emergency management.
Planning grant?
Planning grant, I believe it is, yes. This is the, the Richmond Community Something Foundation Grant. Grace Episcopal Grant, some, some years they give money, some years they don't. Public Safety Radio, no change there. Department of Forestry, you know, several years ago, we, uh, uh, found out that we're required by the Code of Virginia to pay them, uh, I think it's nine cents for every acre of forest land in the county and that amounts to just under four thousand dollars. That's so if you have a forest fire and you call, uh, for the plow, uh, because we pay this, it's coming.
You know.
Uh, Local Emergency Services, no change there. Sheriff, this is the jail budget. You'll see that, uh, the increase here is five percent. Asking for, uh, increase in repairs and maintenance. Buildings are getting older, there's, uh, you know, there- there's upkeep. So that's four thousand under food service supplies.
If there's forty people in the jail, do we know what the mix is between, uh, actual county inmates, if you will, and those that are being state or federal that are boarding there?
I don't know that.
Could we get that, please?
Alright. About a twenty-nine thousand dollar increase under the jail. Juvenile probation and detention, uh... Actually a decrease based on the Merrimack Center. This amount is based on a five-year average of services provided for Lancaster County. Building inspection, again, the increase is for salaries. Nothing, nothing out of whack there. Animal Control, again, salaries. They do- they do an amazing amount of work with limited personnel. I'm amazed how they get it all done. Uh, he is asking for three thousand dollars more in vehicle repair because, uh, Jamie gets the most out of all of the vehicles that they have.
He does.
And his, uh, his Dodge dually truck has got some age and miles on it, but he- he keeps it running. So, uh, I- I think that's justified.
I thought we authorized him to get another one, but he chose not to.
Well, well, he- they did buy one for, uh, Michelle and she- she's got a new vehicle. And Jamie's gonna have to replace that vehicle at some point in time.
Well, that- that's what I was gonna get to, you know, we know he likes to keep them running, but after a while, you don't want to keep money in there.
Gives him bragging rights.
Still spending money.
Yeah. But I tell you, he's been driving the- the little blue Ford Escape that, uh, Steve Dolam used to drive, uh, while his truck is- is out of service and- and he- he likes that vehicle too, so, uh... But, uh, a small increase here mainly for salaries and the maintenance. Medical examiner, this is for anyone who's sent to the, uh, the Richmond office for an autopsy. The county has to pay twenty dollars per- per person, uh, by state code. So total public safety, six million, one hundred and forty-three thousand, thirty-six dollars, an increase of three hundred and fifty-six thousand. Public Works, refuse disposal, again, the salary line item is the five percent for the- the two full-time folks that we have there. He is asking for an increase under maintenance service contracts, which is waste management. Uh, you can see based on actuals that we're way above the- the, uh, the amount that we budget. And so he's- he's asking for an amount that's more in line with that. Now, this, uh, this is a little skewed because we, you all authorize the excess above the budgeted amount to come out of CARES funds, so that's not reflected in- in this amount, that additional amount above the- the budgeted amount, because CARES money is in a separate fund, so, uh...
In other words, this may be amended if that was counted, or?
No, it's- technically it's counted because you all approved it and we think it's a legitimate, uh, expense of CARES money and you can, uh, CARES money's not supposed to be used for budgeted items other than public safety salaries. Uh, so, you know, you all made the determination that with all the stay-at-home orders and everything, that people were doing more at home, you know, cleaning and- and taking more trash to the dump, so, uh... I mean, for- for budget purposes, I guess I could add that number there to make it look-
Well, that's- that's, I guess that's where I'm at, because if this number is lower than what we actually talking about, then we still might have a problem coming next year. I mean, they definitely more trash. I don't know why, but it's- it's definitely, you know, something going on.
Yeah, it- it is. And, uh, I don't know, there's supposed to be an article in the paper this week. I don't know if you've seen the paper, uh, the- the Kimona dump filled up one day last week-
Yeah.
And, uh, we had trouble getting a replacement, a roll-off. And, I mean, air contract is with Waste Management. Uh, Waste Management has subcontracted out to a company called The Local from Fredericksburg, uh, which handles all of their switches on the northern net. And, uh, sometimes when we call for a switch, it doesn't come as quick as- as we like, so... Uh, but Donald is on top of that and he's, uh, he's- he's let them know that, you know, we're- we're not happy with that. And, uh, so I don't know if you've read the paper, I haven't read it yet, but, uh, Jackie Nunnery called me earlier this week and I talked to her and Donald talked to her as well, so...
The problem is, we probably don't have any leverage against a subcontractor. We have a degree of leverage against the contract-
Yeah.
-person, but if they subcontracted and they're the people who let you down, well-
Yeah.
But- but Waste Management, we still are their customer.
Yeah.
Well, I understand.
Yeah, they need to- need to correct it. I mean, it's a mess down there. Yeah, I'm- I went down there last week when they- it's just-
Yeah.
And the people just rolling in, you know, and-
Yeah.
Everybody's frustrated and they wanna throw stuff out there anywhere then.
Yeah, dump it on the ground.
And, and, you know, when I was talking to the reporter, you know, she- she made the statement that people have told her that this happens all the time. And I told her, I said, "No, it doesn't happen all the time. It happens every now and then, but usually it's on a holiday weekend." Like a couple of years ago, on Memorial Day weekend, when you, uh, you noticed it.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you either got two choices when that happens. You either, uh, tell the folks to go to Regina, uh, or you start piling it on the ground until you get an empty container.
Yeah.
You got two choices.
And then you got somebody who's gotta pick it up off the ground and put it in a container.
Then you got somebody who's gotta pick it up and then you may have, uh, broken bags and trash on the ground and- and it becomes a mess.
It's just not good.
Back- back to the- the subject of- of, uh, leverage. If we were to advertise for a maintenance service contract tomorrow, is it realistic to expect that we would have multiple bidders? I mean, is there anybody besides Waste Management that's in the game in this area?
Not in this area. You do have Vispa on the Middle Peninsula. And Donald had reached out to them when we were talking about the recyclables issue a year or so ago. And he just asked the question at that point in time, would they be interested in doing for us what Waste Management does? And the answer was no. They don't wanna come across the bridge, they don't wanna come on the northern net.
Don, this- this is-
So bottom line, we don't have much leverage?
I don't think so.
Okay.
This is- what, and it's- it's not dealing with the budget, but what happened with the gate down there?
What happened with what?
The gate.
Oh, uh, the, uh, the recyclable, uh, person who- who comes in from, uh, from Right Way Recyclers to pick up their containers, uh, hit that fence. Someone was coming out and he had to swerve to miss it. I don't know who was in the wrong and, uh, and the- the Right Way Recycling Truck and Trailer caught that fence on the right-hand side and pulled it down. Now, uh, we just ordered the parts to fix that the other day and- and Right Way Recycling has agreed to pay for the- pay for the parts, so... Uh, I'm assuming, but based on that fact, that they think they're responsible for it, so...
Not only pay for the parts, but the labor to do it too?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and they- we're gonna pave that. We're talking about Kimona, right?
Yeah, if you all wherever approve a, uh, an estimate for us to use, we'll- we'll pave it.
No, I thought we did.
No, you, back in October, we went out to bid, we had three bids and- and you all, because there was a- a little bit of a discrepancy between one of the bids included putting the culvert pipe out by the gate, another one had four inches of asphalt in a couple of places instead of three inches.
They weren't the same.
And you all didn't think it was apples to apples and, uh, so you rejected all bids. Donald went back to them. Nobody would give us a price that late in the season because they knew they couldn't get to the work until the spring and they didn't know what the cost of asphalt would be. So, uh, Donald, I've asked him to go back- go back out and get, uh, bids again. Uh, but, uh, you know, I- I don't know what we're gonna get. We had three last time. The lowest one, I think, was fifty-eight thousand, the highest one was eighty-five thousand. Uh, we recommended the fifty-eight thousand, which was CW Davis. And, uh, but you all rejected all bids, so...
Well, yeah, because they weren't apples to apples.
Yeah, but they won't bid apples to apples because, uh, they will not guarantee their work if they don't put the amount of asphalt that they think is needed. So if, uh, i- if the company in- that came out of Colonial Heights won't guarantee their work unless they put four inches in certain spots, then they're not gonna give you a bid for three inches. And the other two bids were- were fine with three inches of-
So, so it's really gonna be up to us where we want the four inches or three inches versus, you know?
Exactly, yeah, I mean, they're not gonna-
We gotta hire an engineer to try and affect the asphalt's gotta be.
To be honest with you, I don't know if Donald's gonna be successful in getting bids. Because, uh, we had three good bids last year and- and we- we turned them down. Uh, 'cause everybody's very busy.
They are.
And so I don't know how quickly that's gonna get done.
What about Nutsville? Is that ready to go here that quick?
That, yeah, when the weather warms up, that's- that's, uh-
It's getting warm, so what was it today?
But, yeah, but it's gonna turn cold again next week.
Monday's coming down again.
So, but no, that has been approved, just waiting on weather-
Alright.
-to- to handle that.
But it's getting warmer, dog.
We'll get that scheduled, John.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, let's see, this is General Properties. Let's see, yeah, uh, again, the increase is just the five percent. Uh, increase of repairs and maintenance of ten thousand, but I think, let's see...
Mr. Palin brought up the cupola on the- the top of this building right here-
Yeah.
-sometime back.
Yeah, it was in the capital improvement budget and the painters were here today. They- they painted the trim on this building and the- the cupola is the last thing to do. They- they gone up there and scraped it, but they haven't painted it. But they were here today, uh, working on it and they told Ernie that they were gonna be here until it's finished.
So it's imminent.
It's imminent, yes.
Unless it rains.
Unless, yeah, and it's supposed to rain, I think, four days next week.
Of course.
No, no, God, please, I don't believe it till I see it.
At least it's gonna break this- it's gonna break this drought we're in right now.
Yeah, now, Ernie has asked for an increase in repairs and maintenance, uh, maintenance service contracts, so he'll- he can come in and explain that, uh... When- when the time comes and, let's see, uh, might have to go out to get that number to take on. Total for Public Works is, uh, one million, five twenty-eight and an increase of a hundred and four thousand. Any other questions on that? Health and Welfare. Uh, Health Department Level Funding, two fifteen, nine twenty-eight. They have certainly earned their money this past year. Free Health Clinic is again requesting additional funding. Uh, you'll see that, this is the requested column. You'll see that, uh, last year you gave them a hundred thousand, four seventy-seven, and that's what you've been giving them for the past several years. Uh, but you'll see in the supporting documentation that they base this number on, uh, a percentage of services provided to Lancaster County, uh, based on the other, y- you know, it's prorated based on services to the county, so...
That's twenty-nine percent, isn't it?
I- I, uh, yeah, yeah.
I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
So they serve four counties, three counties?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
So this is just Lancaster's part of what they serve?
This is Lancaster's part. Yep.
And that's in the supporting documentation?
It's in the supporting documentation. The Health and Welfare actually has three attachments, because this is one of the- the groups where you have a lot of the tax return information that's provided for you all. And on your, on the iCompass site, you'll see Health and Welfare Number One, Health and Welfare Number Two, Health- Health and Welfare Number Three. So you've got three attachments, uh, related to- to this item. But Number One is the only one that's gonna have the budget worksheet on top of it. Bay Aging is asking for a- a small increase this year, uh, nineteen hundred and seventy-two dollars. Again, they explained that in supporting documentation, I believe it has, uh, they wanted additional bus, uh, for a certain length of time in- in Lancaster. Versability, I left that on there, but I- we can probably get rid of that. I thought they would make a request this year, but they didn't. Uh, Legal Aid Works, uh, again, they're asking for fifty-six hundred dollars based on, uh, the percentage of clients that they serve who are Lancaster County residents. You all have chosen not to fund this in the past, but they are- they are persistent in, uh, in requesting. The Haven, uh, Level Funding. Comprehensive Services Act, you'll see that I increased this to eight hundred thousand.
Is that based on how we're executing this year?
Yes.
Okay.
The, uh, the state estimate for Lancaster County is, uh, is like eight hundred and ninety thousand is what they estimate.
How do they come up with that estimate?
I- I don't know. I don't know.
Do they know something we don't? Do they know how many children are gonna go into this kind of system?
Well, you- you made a comment about the state earlier, so I- I don't know.
I mean, uh, I mean, come on.
Yeah, I- I don't know. I mean, the state sends me these- these, you know, these estimates and I, uh, I didn't use the estimate that they have, but I did increase theirs, uh, just like the sales and use tax estimate. You know, I told you, they- they recommend Lancaster County, uh, use over two- two million dollars in their budget, but, uh...
Well, we know that this pandemic has affected kids greatly across- across the world, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's very possible that-
Yeah, and- and like I told you, the- the services that the CSB can provide, the Community Services Board, uh, are much cheaper for the county. And, uh, you know, as I said, that's- that's what I look at at the CPMT meetings is if those services can be provided by the CSB instead of CSA. Sometimes you have no choice, mu- well, most of the time you have no choice, uh...
I know certain kids are driven to Richmond.
Oh, yeah, daily.
Yeah, daily, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Social Services Budget, uh, at those budget, you'll see that, uh, there's an overall hundred thousand dollar increase which kind of skews our numbers on our budget, but the local portion is only a ninety-eight hundred dollar increase. Gender Quality Life, that could probably come off.
Yes.
Uh, Boys and Girls Club is Level Funding, thirty-five thousand. Chamber of Commerce, nothing there. Food Bank, Food Bank is actually requesting five thousand dollars. And there are, uh, they've- they've got some supporting documentation in there. You can be the judge of- of, uh...
I assume that it- the whole five thousand isn't related to enriching Richmond County on the taxes, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I don't believe- I don't, well, you- you'll have to make that determination from the, uh-
This was totally predictable. As soon as he got the thousand in there, it was totally predictable, five-fold increase.
Uh, Health and Welfare, a total of three- Uh, Health and Welfare, a total of three million, five ninety-eight, uh, an increase of three hundred and fifty-four thousand, but as I said, a hundred thousand of that is social services, that's reflected overall in the budget, but the local contribution is only up ninety-eight hundred dollars. Any other questions on Health and Welfare? Education, that probably should say non-K through twelve education, because this is just R C C, uh, they're requesting a small increase, a hundred forty-eight dollars, uh, seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Yeah, I would think that they would be lumped in with education with our own public schools, but.
Well, I, I, I think it's a good idea to keep them separate, we always have.
Yeah.
I know you always have.
Yeah, I, I think they should be separate, because they're not K, they're not K through twelve, uh, they, there's a little bit of crossover with the governor's school, uh, but, uh, I mean, I think it's better to keep them separate.
Okay.
Uh, Recreation. Y M C A's level fun, uh, requesting level funding, uh, let's see, try to get that to where.
How come, uh, go back here, how come the Boys and Girls Club is not under Recreation?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't know, that bill is, is kind of the way it's always been there, uh.
I was just wondering why that's under Health and Welfare instead of under.
I, I don't know, I mean, Jack, do you have any thought on that?
What, the electrical services?
No, no, why the, uh, Boys and Girls Club is under.
No, the Y M C A.
Health and Welfare instead of Recreation.
Oh, I see, I thought he was asking about the Y M C A.
No, that's what you asked him, Jim, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's just the way it's always, that's the way we've had it, I mean, I, I haven't changed anything.
It's a good question, I think it could fit either.
I, I do too, I, I really, I think it could, so, uh.
I just, you know, it dawned on me that, that it was over there.
Yeah.
When you said Y M C A, I said, well, no, the Boys and Girls Club is, you know.
I'm assuming, because in the beginning, it basically was with the educational section of it after school and so on, and the Y wasn't so much that at that particular time.
Yeah, they always, well, I always had a after-school program.
Yeah, but not as much as what we did, Boys and Girls was initiated, or initiated, uh, but things have changed.
Yeah, I mean, I think it could go in either place, so. The Y is level funded, uh, Mary Ball Museum, they request the same amount of money, but the actual electrical bill is more than that. You know, you may wanna consider making this two thousand.
Maybe I'll consider that after they give us their histories on all these portraits.
I'll see if Karen Hart, I'll see if Karen Hart can, can be here for.
That's right, she hasn't done that.
For, uh, for your presentation.
I look forward to that.
Let's see, H R C, uh, nothing there, Library, level funded?
Well, wait a minute on that, it's not level funded, they got a bump to one twenty-two, nine fifty-five, on the promise that they would do something, which they didn't do. Now, because we didn't go in detail on the budget last year, they were going to be questioned on that, so I don't consider this level funding, I considered a hundred and ten or whatever it was, level funding.
Good point.
Very good point.
Good point. And I'm sure, uh, Alice will be here, presentation time.
I look forward to it.
Me too.
As I know Dr. Westbrook.
Me too.
Uh, Youth Club, they're requesting, uh, the normal ten thousand dollars that you all have been, uh, giving them the past few years. Now, you remember at last month's meeting, uh, the president, Dwight Forster, brought up the possibility that they would be coming to the county seeking money to replace the lights at the ball fields. Uh, I can shed some more information on this for you. They need to replace the lights, uh, on the boys' field, and they need to install lights on the new girls' field. Superintendent Russell actually, and I actually had a conversation today about this. The company that is most equipped to do this is called Musco, Musco does mostly all, uh, lighting, uh, at big venues, and, uh, Dan is, uh, is going to handle installing the lights on the girls' field, because, uh, he feels like he's compelled to, under Title Nine, uh, you know, providing the same, uh, experience and, and equipment for, uh, females as, as males. So he's gonna take care of the lights, uh, for the girls within his existing budget. The Youth Club would like for the board supervisors to pay for the replacement of the lights on the boys' field. Dan brought me some information from Musco. There's a possibility the county could enter into a contract if you all chose to do this, uh, for ten years, and it's about nineteen thousand dollars a year, uh, a little bit of interest on that as well. The total amount of the project is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, uh, so, but spread out over ten years, it's nineteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents a year. So, you know, just, uh, just talking out loud, if you all wanted to do that, you could, uh, you could maybe pull this ten thousand back and make that part of the twenty thousand and say, okay, the county's paying twenty thousand, uh, replacing your lights, you know, in lieu of this, uh, maybe you want to do the twenty thousand in addition to this.
I think, before we pull anything back, though, I think we would have to say, okay, if we take that ten thousand from you, what would that do to?
Well, I, I, I asked that question today with Travis.
Yeah.
And, uh, he said he thought they, they would be okay. Uh, but, you know, certainly they would like to keep it.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we all got the phone call from him, and, and I, my conversation with him, I asked him what fundraising efforts they were making, are they planning on having any, well, you know, probably so, yes, and, and I told him I would think that we would be happy to assist.
Yeah.
With their fundraising, but, you know, not just, I don't know, I mean, you can't, you can't say no to what the kids need.
Yeah.
They need it, they need it, and you can't, they can't just replace the bulbs that are out.
Right.
Because they, they're not existing anymore.
Right.
You have to replace all of it.
Yeah, now, the boys' field, the, the poles can stay, but they have to put new arms on the top of the poles to hold the L E D lights, because I'm told the L E D lights are heavier than the ones that are up there now. So, uh, they will have to, uh, replace the, the mast at the top of the pole, but, uh, the, the project on the girls' field is from scratch, because that's all brand new, and.
One, one of the things too, and I know the, the rest of the guys wasn't privy to what our discussion we had last week with the, uh, the, uh, when we doing the new strategy?
Yeah, the Business Relations Advisory Committee.
You know, the advisory committee, we, we promoting the county, and that's one of the things we promoting is the Dream Field down there, you know, we trying to attract the, the people with kids into the county, young, younger people, and we saying, okay, we got Dream Field, we got the Y, we got the Boys and Book, Girls Club, so I think the county really need to look at hard, you know, the money that, that, uh, we can spend down there to help, because that is something that we, we, we promoting, we promoting Dream Field.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they don't have that, they don't have anything.
Well, no, and, 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 and when you got young couples looking at coming into the county, okay, what do, what recreation do we have? And that's part of our recreation, is, is that, so.
Yeah, can't argue that, but it would be nice if they had a plan that we could join with them and make it happen.
Yeah, I agree with that, I'd like to see them put forth some effort for raise some additional funds.
Well, they, 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 they do put forth effort now in raising money, oh, yeah, and, and, you know, you look at the work that's been done down there over the last years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I'm told that Musco will not enter into contract with nonprofits, uh, but obviously they would enter to, in a contract with, uh, the county, so.
Well, I also ask the question of, is there a requirement of having night games? Because some of these games, I would think.
Yeah.
It's summertime, in the most part, and I would think they could be scheduled when there's daylight.
Yeah, well, you know, that's true, but Lancaster hosts, uh, several tournaments a year. And it's kids down there, you know, from sunup.
Yeah.
Till, till ten, eleven o'clock at night playing ball.
I'm not trying to wiggle off the money.
And, right.
I'm just.
And, and, you know, I, I, I'll say too, that the boys' baseball team has been the state runner-up twice in the last six years, so, uh, you know, they're, they're doing good things, uh, you know, the county doesn't have a Parks and Recreation Department, that's why you all give money to, to the Boys and Girls Club, Y M C A, and the Youth Club, and, and others, so.
I guess the reason I was, I was saying too, I'd like to see them do a little more effort, because the conversation that I had over the telephone, it was like, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. The conversation that I had over the telephone, it was just like, this is, this is what it costs, we'd like to you all just to pay for it.
Yeah.
And, uh, that sort of bothered me, I wanna say, you, 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 are you coming to ask us to help you, or you just saying, okay, give us this? But, and, and what I got was, you know, I want you all to pay for it.
I had exactly the same reaction, it was the same thing, I mean, there's a big difference between helping them out, and I don't think the fact that they won't, this company won't write a contract with a nonprofit should be a showstopper, we can work around that.
Yeah.
But I think it comes back to help.
Yeah.
I think I must have been the third call, because by the time it got to me, they were considering it.
I had two people call me, did you all?
I only have one.
Well, I guess I've been in conversation with them for about twelve months, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've been over there and visited and been, been going on and on and on and on, but, you know, the, the thing I think we just wanna keep in our mind, that ballpark is central, central to us drawing people into this county, and, and, and it's, it's a bright spot.
It is.
I tell you, it's a bright spot down there, they've done, they have done magnificent with that ballpark, it's one of the best ballparks around here, you can travel anywhere, in a school or anything like that.
Absolutely.
College or anywhere, I mean, they, they have done some good work down there.
Yep.
Yep.
So, food for thought, all right.
But the, the point is, it's not in here because we haven't heard.
It's not in here because the budget submission I got was what you see on the screen.
And I said, I brought that up with him also, I said, you know, you're, you're asking for, at that time, it was the girls' field also, so it was like a quarter of a million dollars, and I said, you're gonna come during public comments section, uh, session, and ask for this, when you miss the deadline, to be considered for the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I, and I, I don't know why they took this approach, because they, like I said, I've been in conversation with them over here, so I don't know why they took this approach.
The only, only explanation I can offer is that the presidency changed, I believe, recently.
It did, yeah.
And so, uh, you know, maybe, may, maybe it takes a while to get up to speed, I, I don't know.
Okay.
So your total recreation and cultural activities is actually the same, uh, as last year. Community development, uh, Dr. Westbrook, I know, would, is, is glad of this, that there's nothing there.
Very glad.
Under the Chesapeake Bay Region Partnership, Rapid River Basin Commission is, uh, level funded, uh, Land Use Administration, my old department, Brian's current department, uh, you see just ma- just salary increases there. Department of Housing.
Is Hannah under that?
Yes.
Okay.
Department of Housing, same thing, is just, uh, salary increase. Planning District Commission, this, this is their request, Tourism Council, level seventy-five hundred, the Environmental Planner, level at four, uh, five, and the, just the norm, normal contribution to the P D C at forty-five hundred.
And I would just like to say that I believe somewhere I read where they are expected to come before us at some point and talk about all the things they're doing for us, am I incorrect in that, did I dream that?
You must.
Because I, I haven't heard it, I haven't seen it, and I, maybe I slept through that, I don't know, but I would certainly like for Mr. Davis to justify any amount of money that they request from us, so.
I will.
I'm assuming he or someone will come before us.
I'll make sure that he's, uh, in attendance on the twenty-third or the twenty-fifth, uh.
But there's, there's supporting documentation on this also, right?
Uh.
All the great things they've been done for us.
No, not, not a great deal from the P D C.
Oh, God, really? I'm shocked, shocked, I said.
I'll, I'll make sure Jerry attends, uh, he'll probably want to attend virtually instead of in person, but, uh, I, I can't, you know, I can't make him come in person, they can, uh, if they choose to do it virtually, they can do that, so. Broadband Authority, here's another big, uh, increase, uh, everything you see bolded is, uh, the request for a full-time employee, and they're basing it on a hundred and fifty thousand dollars total, so this is just a way it breaks out with salaries and fringe benefits. This could be a contract employee, and to be honest with you, that may be my preference, uh, for them to hire their own person, uh, but they have no money, uh, so they're looking for the county to fund them money in a budget so that they can hire this executive director. Now, we should know next week, I'm told, uh, that whether or not we will receive the revised Russ Grant. If we get that, this position is needed sooner than later, I mean, very soon, because that would provide funding for the broadband authority and give this person, uh, you know, the means to hit the ground running. Uh, they've had one person express interest, they've advertised for this position, and the closing date is tomorrow, uh, so.
And it's important to say that the one person who's expressed interest is very well.
Very qualified.
Qualified.
Very qualified, uh, so.
Plus hopefully we have some other options.
And, and we'll touch on that at the end.
Yes.
So, um, now, they are asking for fifteen thousand additional, uh, twenty-five hundred extra in advertising, five thousand in confident education, which, uh, you know, in a COVID world, I don't, uh, don't know that I quite understand that, uh, and nine thousand dollars in software, so. The total increase is a hundred and sixty-five thousand over what was budgeted last year. Soil and Water Conservation District, this is one.
Bob has his P D C, I have the Soil and Water Conservation District.
I was getting ready to say, this is one of your favorites.
Yeah, and I join with you in this.
Now, the thing about it is, we have talked, they, they have held us, tried to, you know, put a gun to our head over the, uh, you know, the, uh, dangerous things.
Yeah, the hazardous materials.
Hazardous materials recycling, but we have talked about just getting them out of the picture on that.
Yeah.
And what we do, nothing for them in my book.
Well, they're, they're asking for their usual fifteen thousand, which is what they receive from the other counties, and you'll see in the supporting documentation that they have tied the additional funding that the other counties receive to a, uh, a memorandum of understanding based on how much a county gives them, how many ag assessments they will provide.
That's what they tried to hold us hostage about.
Which is part of the, our Chesapeake Bay Act, uh, requirements. Uh, now, what we've done is, we've just bypassed them, and Brian has, uh, figured out a way that we do them ourselves.
Yep.
So, uh, you know, they're asking for fifteen, you'll see in the supporting documentation, and, uh, I'm sure Kathy and Brandon will be here as well.
I look forward to that, I'll say. Yep.
Wetlands Board, uh, really no change there, uh, B Z A, no change there, Planning Commission, no change, Extension Service, same bottom line, she just moved some numbers around. Virginia River Realm asking for twenty-five thousand again, I know Dr. Westbrook has said in the past that he would like to see the, uh, the money that we get from the transient occupancy tax be the county's contribution to, uh, to River Realm, that's, you know, I, I don't wanna take words out of your mouth, but I, I believe.
I mean, the tourists give us the occupancy tax, and we can use that money directly to help with tourism.
So, at the very least, the fifteen thousand that I budgeted in, in revenue from the transient occupancy tax will help cover, uh, this.
I go by once a week. I go by once a week, buy a big old billboard there on Route seventeen, advertising, put out by, put there by River Realm.
Mm-hmm.
Make Valley Hoohing the Middlesex Museum. Is there a reason why we don't have something like that? That Valley Hoohs what we got going on in this county?
They do a lot online.
Yeah, they do.
They, they actually do a very good job.
They do a really good job. Uh, I've seen on, uh, news broadcasts on the Richmond station, they're talking about like, they had some program last year with the oysters. I can't, they had a catchy name for it, Oyster Palooza or something, I think it was.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I saw it on the Channel Six News on Richmond, and, uh, they, they made a big deal out of it. So they, they get the word out and through social media and everything. They, they do.
Billboard or no billboard, they're a good deal.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think so.
They do a great job.
Yeah, okay.
Not hard over on that one.
Yeah, and Pumunki, I can get rid of that, cause that's.
Yeah, you don't hear anything from them.
No. So total for community development is seven twenty-four, increase of a hundred seventy-eight. Non-departmental, this is very quick. This is, uh, the landfill. Uh, you know, it's been closed for many years, but we'll be paying for it forever. Uh, an awful amount. Enhanced Emergency Telephone System, Glenn handles this and has reduced, uh, the contracted services down quite a bit. But he's comfortable with the amounts that he has put there. So, and that's the only two things under.
This is the thing that the state required us to do, the enhanced nine-one-one.
Yes. And we've, uh, since we've been involved with these CARES broadband projects, we've, uh, we've learned that there might be a connection between this E-nine-one-one and the broadband tower project back here. So, uh, Glenn and I and, and, uh, and Matt and, and Gary and, uh, Mark, and I'll probably bring Jeffrey in too, are gonna have a meeting here in the near future and try to map out how that tower project can help us with E-nine-one-one and also the P-twenty-five digital radio upgrade requirement. Uh, that's in the capital improvement budget. You may remember last year, we had budgeted one point one million for that, and we're gonna couple that with the eight point three million dollar match for the Russ grant for a total of nine point four million. We had that included in the VRA refunding as new money and, and, you know, we, we didn't get solid answers when it came time for that funding to be, uh, closed, so that came out. And, uh, and in this year's capital improvement budget, Matt was asking only for ten thousand dollars as planning money and had pushed out the, uh, the one point two million now into FY twenty-three. So it's, it's a federal requirement. We're required to do it. Uh, we have until twenty twenty-five to get it done. But if we can gain efficiency and save money by tying in with this tower project, you know, that makes sense.
Yep. Yep.
Schools, this is the breakdown of, uh, by category. Uh, you'll see instruction attendance. Bottom line with the schools is it's, it's level funded now. It's no, it's no, uh, local increase.
Now, on, on the schools, on the, their, uh, school capital improvements, there's been the six hundred thousand in there for years for the, uh, you know, the old library. It got a hundred ninety-seven thousand in there. Is that in addition to the six hundred thousand that's been approved before, or is it just now down to that number?
No, no, it was, it was five hundred thousand. And, uh, the hundred ninety-seven, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves now. Uh, well, let me, let me just jump to that. If you, anybody got any questions on the school other than, all right, let me, let me jump over here to the capital improvements. Yeah, okay. All right, what Jack is referring to is this one hundred ninety-seven thousand right here. Uh, and, and you see the five hundred thousand was, uh, approved last year in the capital improvement budget. And Dan had said that he hoped to get private donations to make up the difference in the, the cost of the renovation. I think he had uh, envisioned that total renovation of that old library to be somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred fifty thousand. But he only, uh, requested five hundred thousand, uh, in the capital improvement budget because he was hoping to get private money. And George may know about this as well. But what they have requested this year is that hundred ninety-seven thousand was under their bus replacement schedule. And since the buses have not been running up and down the roads, uh, during COVID, they said, you know, we can get by a year without replacing our normal two buses this year, but we'd like to have that money added on to the renovation of the library project. And they are, they are in the midst of that renovation. They have gutted the building with their own staff. Uh, Guernsey Tingle has prepared the, the plans for the renovation. And, and that is, that is moving. Uh, you know, maybe not as fast as everybody would like, but it, it is moving. So that's, that's where that hundred ninety-seven came from. If, if it wasn't there, it would have been in the bus line. So. And again, the Planning Commission is gonna hold their public hearing on the FY twenty-two items next Thursday night. County projects. You'll see, here's the ten thousand that I was talking about, that Matt was requesting for planning money for this P-twenty-five upgrade. Ernie can expand on these next two items right here. Uh, the roof on this building is a slate roof. I don't know if it's original to this building. It's very old, uh, and we have a lot of leaks. Uh, and, I mean, I can show you ceiling tiles all throughout this building where the water leaks. And part of the problem is a flat roof over top of my office, uh, and the, the office next door to mine. Ernie has been patching the roof the best he can. Every time you go up there and step on a piece of slate, it'll break. So he has, uh, asked for a roof replacement on this building. Uh, it would be, it's not gonna be slate when it goes back, but it would be, uh, composite shingles that resemble slate. So they're not, they're not your normal shingles. They are, they, they would look like slate because, you know, this, the age of this building, this building deserves something that, you know, looks old.
And I assume that they don't break when you step on it.
They don't break when you step on it. So.
I was kidding, really?
Yeah, but, but he, the estimate we've gotten is a hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars. So he can expand on that, uh, when the time is right. This item here, replace the HVAC system at the courthouse. That system has been a headache from day one. Uh, I get calls all during the summer from folks in that building. AC's not working, AC's not working. It's eighty-four degrees in my office. Ernie has, uh, you know, pieced it together, kept it running. It's a carrier system. It's eleven years old now. You know, things, things in the HVAC world, technology-wise, have come a long way in the last, last ten years. This system is all computerized, too.
That was supposed to be a big deal, and it turned out to be a disaster. We even had to hire somebody.
This is where you pay extra to get something. Yeah.
Yeah.
Had to call Richmond to change the thermostat.
You have to call Richmond. And now, now Ernie can, uh, we, we've got software here and a laptop, and he can, he can adjust the temperature, you know, uh, from here, but if something goes wrong, you gotta get a technician from Richmond down here. And, so he's gotten an estimate from a local firm to replace that entire HVAC system, and you see it's a half million dollars. So.
So, but hopefully this new system won't, will, will take care of all those issues.
Uh, yeah, I, yeah.
So you, maybe you're in the room, it's too warm, you can go to the thermostat and change it.
Now, you, you don't see the supporting documentation for capital improvement items yet because the Planning Commission is holding a public hearing next week. So once they've held that public hearing, I can go in and attach that supporting documentation, uh, to that tab. And you'll see in that supporting documentation where they've done a savings analysis. Uh, and, uh, the savings on electricity, how quickly that system will pay for itself. So, uh, it's not on there yet, but after the Planning Commission's public hearing, I'll, I'll.
The same promise was made on the system that went in there.
I know, uh, I know.
Yeah. What we ought to do is haul the architects in here, who thought this was a good idea. But we can't, right?
No, no, you, no, we can't.
You know, back some years ago, the, almost every building was built. These kind of systems went in, went, controlled somewhere else. I mean, it, it was one of them, I call it a fad. You know, every building a bit, these people come up and say to you this, okay, we gonna control everything from Norfolk or North Carolina or somewhere like that. So it was a big selling thing back, you know, a few years ago.
Yeah.
And, and counties and nonprofits and everybody jumped on it. Man, we don't have to work to make this. We don't have to do this. And, and it's been a disaster.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Uh, another item you'll see here is, uh, Sheriff's Office building expansion. This is a request from the Sheriff's Office mainly for the dispatch area. The laws are changing, the code of Virginia is changing to where Patrick's gonna have to have an additional dispatcher in the office, uh, overnight time hours. And the law states that you have to have two dispatchers because if one is involved with life-saving over the phone, you're gonna be required by law to have a second one there to, to handle other emergency calls. I don't know if all of you have been down there in that, in the dispatch room. It's very small.
Oh, yeah.
The consoles that they have now are, you know, the size of this desk. The, the monitors are like what Glenn has over there. And, uh, they're just running out of room. So this is not the same building expansion that has been proposed in the past. This is actually, would come off of the dispatch area towards this building. It would be a roof that goes back and ties into the existing roof. Uh, it would create, I believe it's a thirty by forty addition. Create additional offices as well. And, uh, all of that's drawn out in the supporting documentation, but like I said, it's not in here yet because the Planning Commission has not held their public hearing. So the estimate that we have gotten on that is six hundred thirty thousand.
Uh, I would just say, if you haven't been over there, it's worth going over there.
I've been over there. If there's a need, there's a need. Yep, I've seen it. And I was wondering, I said, Dan, if she had to be on the phone handling an emergency with the other things that's constantly going on, she, she wouldn't be able to do it, not by herself.
Yeah. And the other items are just, uh, the sheriff always puts one patrol car in the capital improvement budget, and he handles one through his operating budget, two per year. This is, uh, uh, in a string of replacements of the HVAC systems on the jail. He tries to do two each year. Uh, that's what that is. So the total county, uh, capital improvements are one point three eight million. Total proposed, including the schools, is one point six four three. And as I, as I said at the beginning, you, uh, the prior borrowings, which provided funding for capital improvement items, have been exhausted. So if you, uh, whatever you choose to do out of this, this item, uh, would have to be funded from the general fund, uh, through other borrowing, or perhaps, uh, such as siting agreements for, uh, solar facilities. Cause that, those siting agreements, uh, can be used for, are targeted for capital improvement items. Debt service. The revenue anticipation note, I just carried forth the same, uh, request for FY twenty-two. It was brought up at a prior meeting at what fund balance level was the treasurer comfortable with not uh, having a revenue anticipation note. She's always told me it's six million. We're getting close. I don't know if she's gonna come in in May and request a revenue anticipation note. I don't assume we're gonna know until probably May, May. Last year, we only borrowed a million and a half. Uh, prior years, we had borrowed three million. So I assume if she does want one, it's gonna be less. And, uh, if we can attain, get to that six million dollar fund reserve, uh, this should go away.
Yep.
And there again, if we can anticipate that the school would not take out of the general fund, it's possible. That would be there.
The, the fees that are on there for ten-five, who gets those monies?
That is the, uh, attorney's fees because we did all of the RFPs in-house. We used to get Davenport involved, and at your urging, we, uh, we did it in-house. So there's no, no Davenport fees there. And you see the actual fees from FY twenty were eighty-nine sixty. That's all sans Amazon.
Why can't we use Jim?
Well, that's a, that's a question. I'll, I'll have, I'll have to look at that. I mean, that's.
He said he wasn't busy enough.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Don't blame him instead of the.
Yeah, Jim always, yeah, and, and it's not a bond. I was gonna say, you know, if it's a bond, Jim always says he's not a bond attorney. Uh, but this is just a straight loan with a, with a local bank usually.
Why I have to ask, why, why that kind of money for a attorney to, on, on a simple loan?
That's a good point.
Because they can.
And, and, and I think the interest is pretty much covered by the way Bonnie handles it. She does a good job of, you know.
It's, it's, it's a wash. It, you know, and a couple of years ago, we actually made one.
Yeah, the VIP thing.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, this is the School Energy Performance Bond. It's actually called a, a Virginia Pool Financing Program twenty-ten C bond. Uh, and, uh, you know, we, we just had nominal figures up here based on the worksheet that we had. Now, these are actual numbers, uh, that are coming out. And if you remember from the revenue section, I told you there was a subsidy of about fifteen thousand, so that will help offset this two hundred eighteen thousand. So, uh, that's, that's there. The Chesapeake Bank twenty-fourteen A bonds, they were paid off by the VRA, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, bond from last fall, and you'll see that in a minute. So nothing requested there. The Bank Alliance, a part of that is also, was also paid off, so nothing is requested here. This is the Greentown Gaskins Loan. It's a forty-year loan through USDA. It's, I think it's one point seven eight or one point eight seven percent interest. You know, that's, uh, just a small amount of money each year. The Zion's Bank lease revenue bond from a couple of years ago, three years ago, I guess now, was paid off with that VRA borrowing. So that, nothing requested there. And here is the VRA twenty-twenty C bond. And based on the debt service schedule, the, uh, principal retirement in twenty, in fiscal year twenty-two is eight hundred ten thousand. The interest is a hundred ninety-eight, eight fifty. The total is one million, eight, eight fifty per year. And that is about a forty thousand dollar savings over our annual debt service from the other three notes combined. Now, we've also, you all, also, uh, got closed on a Virginia Public School Authority bond last fall to cover the thirteen point one four five million dollar renovation of the middle school into an elementary school. In FY twenty-two, we only have interest, uh, due on that of, uh, four hundred eighty-four thousand. And I know that Dan and, uh, is, is working on getting that moving as well. Funding is there, so it, 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 it needs to get going. So you can see we have an increase uh, over last year in debt service. Uh, last year's debt service was one million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, three thirty-seven. This year's is one million, seven hundred fifty thousand. The reason being is because of this new mil, money for the renovation of the middle school. You can see that the increase is four hundred twenty thousand. So if you subtract that four twenty from that four eighty-four, there's a savings of about sixty-four thousand dollars, uh, based on the refunding that we did last year. And also sharp, uh, getting accurate numbers on that School Energy Performance Bond. It was about seventeen thousand, uh, difference from last year on that. So that's why your debt service, uh, has increased. And I've got the schedules here as well. You can see. You can see... I lost the heading on that. This is the, uh, twenty-twenty, uh, bond that was, uh, closed on last fall. The same payment, uh, periods were rolled over from the twenty-fourteen notes, and that's a question that George had asked me about, you know, were you gonna lengthen out the, the time of paying these things off? But they're not. The twenty-fourteens were supposed to be paid off in twenty-five and they, so that, this, uh, debt schedule reflects that. And then the Zion's Bank one went out, uh, till twenty-twenty-nine. So, that's why you see the big difference from twenty-five to twenty-six, uh, in debt service for that VRA bond that was closed last year. Uh, this is the, the, uh, VPFP twenty-ten bond for the school energy performance, and these are actual numbers from the debt service schedule. And you will see the Virginia Public School Authority Middle School bond, that is a thirty-year note. Uh, and, uh, that was recommended by the financial advisors, because after ten years, more than likely, there will be refunding opportunities, uh, it's possible. It could be refunding opportunities available there to, uh, to save money on that. So, uh, you can see the total there. I, in order to keep these last five from a, another page, I've just moved them over here. And this is the summary page, which is pretty close to the synopsis page, other than it includes capital improvement items on this line, uh, and it also has FY twenty data, uh, whereas the synopsis page just has FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. So, uh, not gonna go into the personal services page, you all have that. Uh, but those numbers carry over to the salary line items, uh, in the department's budgets. Uh, I am gonna go back and look at the, uh, law enforcement, uh, department and double-check those numbers. So, so that is the budget. Uh, the proposed budget, the first draft, the working budget, you all are gonna tweak it, I'm sure. Uh, and, uh, you know, just, just a couple of notes, moving forward with work sessions. Your next work session is scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-third at five PM, uh, for presentations from department heads and NGOs. You also have a work session scheduled at five o'clock on the twenty-fifth, preceding your regular meeting that night, uh, at five o'clock for additional presentations. So, I'll try to, try to spread them out, break them up, so that we have, you know, an equal amount each day. Uh, there will be people who want to zoom in instead of be here in person, so, uh, be expecting that. Uh, I touched on a few things earlier about other sources of revenue, such as the Four House Track Fund, uh, for economic development items, or maybe you all want to, uh, just earmark that for anything. Uh, and, uh, potential signing agreements for capital improvement items. That's, uh, that's, you know, potential sources of additional revenue. Uh, Dr. Westbrook has, uh, sent, has talked to each of you individually, I know, about possibly adjusting the personal property tax rate. Uh, that has been the same since two thousand and seven, and he's done a lot of, of work, uh, on his own, looking at what, uh, our neighboring counties, uh, have. And, uh, in my mind, whatever, whatever you all decide to do with that, if anything, uh, I know Dr. Westbrook would like to have whatever revenue is generated be earmarked for broadband expansion.
Yeah, the extra revenue.
Yeah.
The difference between what we've been getting.
Right.
And what a new tax rate might do.
Right, the, the, right, the, the extra revenue. So, to me, that's a budget wash, because you're gonna be adding revenue.
If they agree.
Yeah, you're gonna be adding revenue to the revenue side and subtracting the same amount under the expenditures. So, that's a, it's a discussion for you all to have and a, and a decision for you all to make.
I'd like to say one thing about that, too. Um, I found out today that one of the numbers that I had, uh, evidently is not correct. All those tax, all the tax information came from that book that we have, Virginia Local Tax two thousand and eighteen. But, uh, I emailed Marlon today to verify if any of those had changed. And in fact, two or three had changed. One tax rate went down for a neighboring county, and at least one went up. So, uh, I'm gonna resend the current information to you. We're still gonna confirm.
Yeah.
What, what she told me, because, you know, that's the only fair thing.
Well, you know, a- and the budget calendar that you all adopted in January, have you, having your public hearing on the FY twenty-two, twenty-two budget, and the calendar year twenty-one tax rates, the public hearing on April twenty-second, and then adoption on April twenty-ninth. So, we've got some time to have these discussions. Uh, and, so I know that Dr. Westbrook has, has put a lot of time in that, so that's, uh, that, that's an upcoming discussion that we need to have. Uh, Mr. Larson also asked that I, uh, do some work on, uh, if timberland were, would qualify for land use taxation, how that would affect our overall budget. You remember I brought this to you back in May of last year? And depending on whether the timberland was classified as fair, good, or excellent, uh, it would determine how that would affect our tax. So, the, uh, reduction in revenue, if Lancaster County were to adopt land use taxation for forest land, the reduction in revenue would be somewhere between one hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, to two hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and three dollars, based on whether it's classified as fair timberland, good timberland, or excellent timberland. And that's a determination made by the commissioner of revenue. So, to me, a good, the, the average would be a good number to use, and so around two hundred thousand.
No, wait a minute, you said from one hundred thousand to...
From one hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and twenty thousand.
One hundred and seven?
One hundred and seventy.
One seven zero.
One seven zero.
That's okay, so the average would be around...
Right around two hundred thousand.
So, there's three things that we really need to have conversations about. This timberland.
Yeah.
The possibility of raising the personal property tax to dedicate some of that money, and insurance for all county employees.
And, and this...
And we gotta work that into the schedule that we have right now, so that by the end of April...
Well, I, I've got a little bit to add on that. You know, the, uh, our younger employees who still have families, mainly sheriff's office employees and EMS, have complained that the cost for the dual plan, uh, and the family health plan is just too expensive, and that it costs more in Lancaster than it does in other counties. And there is some, some validity to that. So, now, the current plan that we have, uh, the local choice, which I, I think was one of the best moves we've ever done, going to that. It's a state pool, state-run program. Your pool that sets your premium is forty thousand people plus, as opposed to eighty-two people here, which if we were out with a private carrier, air premiums would be set by Airpool. So, the pool that, that's generated by the local choice is, is great. Uh, the, it's more stable now under the local choice, you don't have huge fluctuations. Several years ago, when we were with Optima, they came back with a renewal that had a fifty-nine percent increase. You know, we've seen nothing like that with the local choice. It may be up, you know, two percent, four percent, but then like this year, it's down one percent. So, you know, the local choice i- is, is, you know, is, is a good health plan for us. All of our employees, uh, love the, the Anthem coverage. Uh, but it's the county contribution toward the dual plan and the family plan that keeps coming up. Uh, we offer two plans, based on the number of employees that we have participating. Uh, anything, when you have less than a hundred employees, you get two plans. We have a high deductible, uh, health savings account, which is covered entirely for the employee. What you all contribute covers that policy, uh, so there's no additional expense for the employee if you choose that, uh, high deductible health, uh, service plan. Uh, if you have the dual plan under the high deductible plan, the county currently plays, pays sixty-three percent of that. If you have the family plan, the county currently play, pays fifty percent. The key five hundred plan, the percentages that the county pay, currently pays, is different than the high deductible. For the employee only, county right now only pays eighty percent of that. For the dual plan, the county only contributes forty-three percent. For the family plan, the county only contributes thirty percent. So, to make everything equal, to bring the county contribution up to the level, uh, of the high deductible plan, to bring the county contribution for the key five hundred plan up to the level of the high deductible plan, it would be an increase of expenditures of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So, that's what I would, uh, I would like to see done. It would help with retention and recruiting of employees. You'll see in the supporting documentation, uh, under Chief Smith's, uh, explanation, he brings this up, that, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big deal. We're competitive now. I think we're competitive with their law enforcement salaries and with their EMS salaries. And, but to stay there, I think we need to up our county contribution.
Well, I know that a deputy, uh, applicant was willing to take, at that time, the pay cut to be a deputy here, but he wasn't willing to have the insurance plan that we have. So, he said, no, thank you. Uh, so it is, it's retention and recruitment.
It, it is.
Both.
It is.
Well, I, I, I think, Don, we, I think you're on the right track. I think we, the pay, we got that straightened out. And I think we can get this insurance straightened out. I was trying to follow you a little bit, and I hope it's in there, something I can read, you know? Cause it's, it's a big difference where you're paying thirty percent, uh, or eighty percent, you know?
Mm-hmm.
The counties, and, and, uh, and I think we need to, need to bump that up. I, I thought for some reason we were doing more than that thirty percent on family paying, but, you know...
No, on the, on the key five hundred, that's what it is. On the high deductible, it's fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I will say, though, that if you talked with, uh, well, when I talked with, uh, Whitney Be- uh, at the school, or Dan, they love what they have.
Yeah.
And, and that's not this local choice, obviously.
No.
They have more employees than we have.
Yeah.
But they love it, and they, they don't want to, they won't consider going to local choice.
Well, not right now, but I can assure you at some point in the future, that private policy with their hundred and some employees, whatever it is, is gonna generate an increase one year that is gonna make the decision full.
I can tell you with dental insurance, that, uh, an employer gets a pretty good rate from a company. And so, they go with that company, and it seems like it's three years, sometimes four years. That rate gets jacked up, just like you said happened before. And then the employer has to look for, uh, another, uh, company, and he'll find one.
Yeah.
And then in three or four years, that goes up. It's a game that they play. Uh, so I assume it's a lot of staff time to try to figure out which is the best for now and change everything over.
Well, I know that local choice, cause I, I worked with Frank on that when we got there, and then, that was the best option that was out there.
Oh, it's no question. It's no que- cause we used to shop health insurance annually.
Yep.
And that was a pain. I mean...
That's what I'm saying, for the staff time and all.
Okay, now, Mr. Administrator, Mr. Gil, I think you did an excellent job with presentation to us, and, uh, here, if I wasn't for this, it was good.
Oh, awesome. I thought it was great. I think you did a great job.
Yes, yes.
This, this is all, it's all good.
Now, let me say, ask you this, and I'm, I'm, I ask you this, but I know you're gonna already do it. The three or the four things that we were supposed to be discussing, are you gonna just, uh, uh, schedule that in for us?
Well, I, uh, yeah, I, I think your, your, uh, two meetings, not next week, but week after, are probably gonna be dominated with presentations from, uh, department heads and NGOs. You're also scheduled to have your public hearing on the school budget on April first. So, uh, you could, that's at seven o'clock, so you could have some time, probably before that, to discuss these items. Uh, and you have to come out seven days after that public hearing and adopt the school budget, so you would have another opportunity then, that's at seven o'clock, to come out at five o'clock and continue discussion.
I'm gonna work that into our schedule.
Okay.
All right, yeah, so we'll know exactly where we're going, what we're gonna talk about when we get there, when we're, when we're gonna do it. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna break a rule here. Yes, sir?
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to add on to your comments. This was an excellent budget presentation. Jack used to give a good one. Don, you do it really well. Second, you know, the only thing I have to say is, is there a KERS fund budget? Those are public funds, and we ought to be able to see those in the budget form.
It's, uh, I don't have a budget spreadsheet like this, it's a, it's a separate account, uh, that's, that's run separately. I mean, I can, I can provide you copies of that.
Well, I, I think, not just me, but other people, like Charlie.
Oh, yeah, I mean, well, it, you know, if anybody asks, I can provide it. I mean, that's, that's...
I think the, uh, the, uh, thing you gave us before, I think you gave it to us once a month.
Yeah, I did.
And this, everything, you know, that, that dispensed, the way the KERS funds went and what's requested and...
Currently, you have about six hundred thousand left from the prior year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I just haven't had any requests from anyone.
I thought we had just until the end of the year to expend that money.
No, no, they extended that to the end of this year.
And we're getting another two point two million.
Getting another two million, seventy-five thousand.
Well, George's point is well-taken, and, and there's no reason why it couldn't be included in the, uh, just flash it up there on the county administrator report. Maybe that'll get some people to stay around long enough after, you know, pay attention to some of the others.
But, but the other thing that brings up a good point, and you, too, it's one point nine trillion dollars. What is that going to do to our children, our grandchildren? And at what point in time is the house of cards gonna fall down? It's all I want, you know, you, we can talk about the merits and whatnot like that, but still, it, I can't believe it.
Unfortunately, there's very little we can do about it, except complain.
Well...
And, you know, I thought about it when he was talking about the lights at the girls' field, and that Dan thought he, uh, he has to do it under Title IX. Well, maybe so, but maybe it's gonna be boys playing as girls, you know, because they feel like it that day. I mean, there's so much, there's so much that's wrong these days.
But the thing about it is, it's serious stuff.
I know it is.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I know it is.
You know, I lay awake at night.
We, we're gonna talk after this. All right, gentlemen, and let, you got anything else?
I do not.
Anything, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting to March the twenty-third at five PM.
So moved.
All right, oh, you heard the motion, all favors said aye?
Aye.
All right, unanimous vote to adjourn, uh, the meeting to March twenty-third at five PM. Meeting adjourned.
Excellent job, Dan.
Yes, it was.